Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 10th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:20 a.m. and we have eight members present to shy of a quorum. But this being Tuesday, as is customary, we have a salute to the flag scheduled as well as a special presentation by Councilmember Reyes. Let me recognize Mr. Reyes at this time.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to invite Mr. Bob Baker. He is with the Bob Baker Marionette Theater. That'd be special to have him come on up. For many generations, many years, he has worked with our office, entertaining many of the kids who rarely get the opportunity to enjoy this lost art that is such a treat for so many folks throughout our city. I believe we had something queued up for him, but we'll go ahead with the presentation first and then we'll ask him to do a short presentation of his work. Bob Baker learned the magic of puppetry at the early age of eight. He trained with several different local companies and put his skills to work with his first professional performance for director Mervyn Leroy. While attending Hollywood High School, Bob began manufacturing toy marionettes that sold both in Europe and the United States. After graduation at the age of 18, he began his career in animation at the George Powell Studios, first as an apprentice and later as a head animator for puppet tunes. After World War II, Bob served as an animation advisor at many film studios, including Walt Disney. Bob's collection of Disney character marionettes has been sold at Disneyland since 1955. The deal sealed on a handshake with Walt Disney still holds to this day. In 1961, with his partner Alton Wood, Bob turned a rundown scenic shop near downtown Los Angeles, in my district, into a family entertainment institution that has entertained three generations. An innovative artist and puppet master, Bob and his company have performed puppets around the globe, even on Navy ships and submarines. The Bob Baker Marionette Theater is the oldest of its kind in the United States and has been entertaining children of all ages since its inception in 1963. His puppets have performed in television movies such as Bewitched, Close Encounters of Third Kind, Escape to Witch Mountain, A Star is Born. And during the Golden Age of Hollywood, Bob regularly performed in the homes of Lucille Ball, Joan Crawford, Ronald Reagan, Card Gable, and the likes of Julie Garland, Elvis Presley, and Angela Lansbury. And the other stars providing entertainment for children's parties. Bob has taken his marionettes to countless fairs, puppet festivals, and of course birthday parties. The Bob Baker Marionette have entertained audiences in Las Vegas, Toronto, New York, and Germany. And colleagues, Bob is the gentleman who steps up. We have, every Christmas season, busloads of young kids from my district who rarely get to the mountains. Rarely everyone gets to see snow. We bring the snow down to Illusion Park and Bob shows up with his marionettes and entertains hundreds of kids. And quite frankly, it's the first time they get to see a live show of puppets. We're all used to cartoons, digital type of technology, but this is the real deal. This is Bob Baker working puppets and I think he'd like to give us a very short show of his great work and talent. Mr. Baker?
This is Bill Robinson talking. I will now endeavor to do a tap routine and I'm going to name each an intercept as I go along and please try and follow me. Hang a roll. Double roll. Heel and toe cross. Hang a patient. Drum cap. Drum cap on the right. Left foot. Both feet together. Fan roll. Right foot. Two and toes. Broadway walk. Left foot in one place. Double crack. All folk are now leaving town.
Come on down, Mr. Baker.
Bringing new meaning to pulling strings at City Hall. Mr. Lavange.
Reyes, thank you very much, Bob. Thank you. You used to camp out on Hyperion Avenue if I remember right.
My business partner had that home there for 55 years.
Fifty-five years. I used to walk by when I was a child at school and remember those big yellow buses that Ed Reyes talked about? There's nothing more inspiring than you see the yellow buses moving around, whether it's at your place, or at the zoo, or Expo Park, or Cabrillo Museum. It's just so special, Bob. I just want to thank you for all the thousands of kids from my district who found their way to your theater.
It's really been our pleasure and we've been having all the fun.
You betcha. And I also want to thank Ed. I think we should salute our camera people up there. At ITA did a wonderful job capturing that.
Okay, so, this resolution states, now therefore be resolved, that the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council do hereby congratulate Bob Baker on his lifetime achievements and commend him for his service to five generations of Los Angelinos from San Pedro to Bakersfield in the field of entertainment. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker, for all the smiles you bring to our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Can we all please stand? Our salute to the flag. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes and colleagues. Let's take maybe a five-minute recess here. The time is now 10:30 and we have nine members currently in chambers. We need to retrieve one of our other colleagues. I believe Mr. Cárdenas, Mr. Villaregoza, and Mr. Dudlow are excused for today. Mr. Parks, Mr. Wyson, and Mr. Zion, if you're in the building, we need you back in council chambers. Madam Clerk, five-minute recess, please.
In the interest of this great group that's assembled here, could I please ask that we welcome the Irishman of the year 2005, Tom Larkin? Please stand up. He's here today. Give him a little hand. He led the parade down Broadway and, Tom, we want to thank you for all you do. He's a member of many boards throughout the community, but also on the Amateur Athletic Foundation, which is the legacy to the 1984 games where the members of the board have done strong, great commitment to community, schools, athletic programs, art, and programs throughout. So, Tom, thank you for being here today and congratulations, Irishman of the year, not just 2005, but every year. Thank you, Tom Larkin.[341.13]
And the other stars providing entertainment for children's parties. Bob has taken his marionettes to countless fairs, puppet festivals, and of course, birthday parties. The Bob Baker Marionette have entertained audiences in Las Vegas, Toronto, New York, and Germany. And colleagues, Bob is the gentleman who steps up. We have every Christmas season, busloads of young kids from my district who rarely get to the mountains, rarely everybody gets to see snow. We bring the snow down to Illusion Park. And Bob shows up with his marionettes and entertains hundreds of kids. And quite frankly, it's the first time they get to see a live show of puppets. We're all used to cartoons, digital type of technology, but this is the real deal. This is Bob Baker working puppets, and I think he'd like to give us a very short show of his great work and talent. Mr. Baker.
I will now deliver to do a tap routine. And I'm going to name each and every step as I go along, and please try and follow Hang a roll. Heel and toe cross. Drum cap on the right. Two and toes. Left foot in one place. Oh, folks are now leaving town.
Come on down, Mr. Baker.
Bringing a new meaning to pulling strings at City Hall. Mr. Labange.
Reyes, thank you very much, Bob, thank you. You used to camp out on Hyperon Avenue if I remember right.
My business partner had that home there for 55 years.
Fifty-five years. I used to walk by when I was a child at school and remember those big yellow buses that Ed Reyes talked about? There's nothing more inspiring than you see the yellow buses moving around, whether it's at your place, or at the zoo, or Expo Park, or Cabrillo Museum. It's just so special, Bob. I just want to thank you for all the thousands of kids who, from my district, who found their way to your theater.
It's really been our pleasure, and we've been having all the fun.
You betcha. I also want to thank Ed. I think we should salute our camera people up there. At ITA did a wonderful job capturing that.
Okay, so this resolution states, now therefore be resolved, that the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council do hereby congratulate Bob Baker on his lifetime achievements and commend him for his service to five generations of Los Angelinos from San Pedro to Bakersfield in the field of entertainment. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker, for all the smiles you bring to our children. Thank you so much. Can we all please stand? Our salute to the flag. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And colleagues, let's take a maybe a five-minute recess here. The time is now 10:30, and we have nine members currently in chambers. We need to retrieve one of our other colleagues. I believe Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Vierigosa, and Mr. Dudle are excused for today. Mr. Parks, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine, if you're in the building, we need you back in council Madam Clerk, five-minute recess, please.
In the interest of this great group that's assembled here, could I please ask that we welcome the Irishman of the Year 2005, Tom Larkin. Please stand up. He's here today. Give him a little hand. He led the parade down Broadway. And Tom, we want to thank you for all you do. He's a member of many boards throughout the community, but also on the Amateur Athletic Foundation, which is the legacy to the 1984 Games, where the members of the board have done strong, great commitment to community, schools, athletic programs, art, and programs throughout. So, Tom, thank you for being here today, and congratulations, Irishman of the Year, and not just 2005, but every year. Thank you, Tom Larkin.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, Labange, Lado, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla. Ten members present in the quorum.
Thank you very much. The council is now officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's actually dispense with consent to items and then return to general public comment.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items one through five are ordinances for street lighting districts. I believe 12 council members will be here today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold ordinances temporarily on the desk. In the meantime, we recognize there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on items one through five. Public hearings are open and closed. Next items, please.
Item six through 11 are also public hearing items, and the recommendation for council action would be to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinances until May 27.
Members for items six through 11, I also have no request from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed, or excuse me, open, and unless there's an objection, these items are continued to May 27. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, and on item number 36, that was scheduled inadvertently, and that item should go back to Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee.
Without objection, item 36 goes back to Commerce Committee. Excuse me? Okay, without objection. Members, items 12 through 43 now before us. These items have had public hearings. A motion from the floor to be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to call 18 and 19 special for Councilmember Zine.
18 and 19 call special for Mr. Zine, and we do expect his arrival today. Ms. Gruhl?
Item number 42, please.
Forty-two, call special by Ms. Gruhl, and we do have two motions on one, or two files on that item. Ms. Han?
I'd call 21 special.
Twenty-one, call special by Ms. Han. Forty-two has been called special. Any other specials? Seventeen, call special by Mr. Labange.
And also, Mr. President, on item number 41, there are two reports, and a motion is required on that report.
Members, we have a motion, item 41. If not, we'll call that special as we await a motion on that item. Any other specials? There are no other specials. Let's hold items 12, 13, and 14 on the desk as well. Those are ordinances, and we do expect 12 members. On the balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those matters are approved. Mr. Reyes?
Fourth with on item 25, please.
Fourth with on item 25, please. Fourth with on item 35 as well.
Mr. Padilla, I made an error in my notes. It said item 42. Actually, the item I wanted to call special was 44, so I have no problem with 42.
Okay.
And you'd like 42 special.
Well, let's keep 42 on the desk for Mr. Garcetti now. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 44 through 76. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Members, 44 through 76 are now before us. I do have cards on items 74, 68, 47, and 59. We'll call those special to hear from members of the public. The balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Those public hearings are open and closed. I believe Ms. Gruhl wanted to call 44 special. Any other specials? Ms. Han?
Sixty-four, please.
Sixty-four, call special by Ms. Han. Any other specials on these items? Seeing none, on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item on the supplemental agenda is item number 77. That's an item noticed for public hearing, and also on this item, council can hear the public hearing and then continue the matter to June 10 for second consideration of the ordinance.
Okay. Members, item 77 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Anybody wishing to call this item special? Seeing none. Do we proceed with the vote, or just carry it over, Madam Clerk?
If council wishes to vote, although council should then keep in mind that the ordinance is not adopted, the order would be over to June 10.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that ordinance is adopted. With 12 members now present, let's go back to items one through five and 12 through 14, the ordinance we left on the desk. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 78, and there's a request from the city attorney to continue that matter for one day, and that would be May 11.
Okay. Members, any objection to continuing item 78 for one day? Seeing none. That matter is continued to tomorrow. Madam Clerk, is that the end of our agenda?
Aye, yes it is, Mr. President.
Okay. Before taking up items called special, let's proceed to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. I will begin by calling forward Candy Domares, followed by John Walsh.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Last week was the first time I'd missed council in roughly about, I think, five years. But I did attend the Water and Power Board of Commissioners, and one of the things that they reported on, and something that was reported here over a year ago, was that the vendor discounts were, they were only capturing about 50% of that. As of now, and I think most of you now know, they are capturing 88%. Do you realize what that's going to add up in a year? Roughly over $1 million. So, congratulations to you, to the mayor, to the Department of Water and Power, and especially to Mr. Deaton, because it shows that you're doing everything possible to make sure that the rate payers in this city don't have another increase. So, again, congratulations on that.
Councilmen, councilwomen, I'm interested in who the mayor, next mayor after the mayor elected next week will be. I think it may be Alex Padilla, because the city charter says that if the mayor resigns, and if the mayor is Antonio Vierigosa, and he resigns to take office as governor, since everybody in this building knows that Antonio is running an open covert campaign for governor. In fact, the city, the downtown news had a wonderful little cartoon. There's a little boy, Antonio, and mom is saying, "No dessert until you finish your dinner, Antonio." He's got a junk food, "Mayor?" hamburger, 14th District Council, he's pushing that away. That's a soda. And there is the big ice cream sundae, and that, of course, is California governor. So, that's why I'm asking today. I have two pledges. I will give it to Antonio Vierigosa's staff. One for the mayor, and I will give it to his sister. It says, "I, the undersigned mayor of the city of Los Angeles, pledge reelection to serve the full four-year term and not to run for governor of California, a U.S. senator," and the same thing for Antonio. Everybody knows statewide, the teachers' union gave him $600,000. To run for mayor? No. The campaign hasn't begun. Everybody knows it. The Times won't print it, because if the public finds out that Antonio, you just can't trust him, we all now think so little of the mayorship, mayorality, that he is actively campaigning. And there's not a single person here who's going to say that it's not true. Antonio Vierigosa versus Conan the Barbarian. And don't think this is the end of this. Antonio will be hounded for the next week until he signs the pledge. And I don't know if there's any press over there, other than David Zanheiser, who, single-handedly, one single reporter, has changed the entire race, because the LA Times and the Singleton newspaper are 100% behind Antonio.
Thank you very much.
Antonio for governor. That's what it is. And you will find out if he's elected governor. I don't think he's going to be elected in, when people find out, I don't think he's going to be elected a week from now. But I'm going to finish by saying that Antonio is running an active campaign for governor in New York City, and Carrie is behind him, and in Washington, D.C., collecting pledges for his governor's race. He's had meetings, and he will be on the anti-teachers initiative that Arnold Schwarzenegger has, Excellency of Teachers. He will be blanketing California with the TV ads. It's all set up. I will finish by saying, if he wins the election, within an hour of winning the election, he will attack Schwarzenegger, and the race will be on, and all the fools who voted for him better realize, there's only one issue in this campaign, and that's Antonio Vierigosa's overreaching, egomaniacal run for governor, vice president, and president of the United States.
Thank you very much. Let me call Donna Doherty forward at this time. Donna Doherty, are you still with us? There she comes. And she'll be followed by Ronald Antwain.
Good morning. I'm here about the Griffith Observatory Access Initiative. The fact that after $83 million on this, $31 million of which comes from the city of Los Angeles, $6 million from the state, and $2 million from the federal government at least, we are going to put a sign on the front lawn of that building and say that if you are in a wheelchair, or you're disabled, or you have a child in a stroller, you need to go to the end of the wing around the backside and come the whole length of the wing inside to get to the front four doors. I don't think that's going to happen. I hope it isn't going to happen, but we should all be aware of it. And I would like to suggest that most people here, apparently most of the commissioners from a 2003 census have about 250,000 people in each of your districts, and if you do, then I would wonder why you would ask only Dr. Krupp whether you should make that front entrance accessible. It can be done without destroying any of the historic fabric of the building. I do hope some of you on the council are listening, because it is extremely important. We need to make a choice. Are we going to put a Title II complaint in, or is this a civil rights action? This is everybody being blocked at the front entrance, and may I just read you very quickly a paragraph here? What is accessibility? Universal design is what we're looking for. What is accessibility? So many people don't realize what access means. To me, it means not going through garbage elevators and not going through a garage, but going through a main door where everybody else goes. It means a spontaneity in lifestyle. I want to go buy my tickets. I don't want to go to a special place. I want to go to the box office. The question I get asked all the time by architects for concert halls is, how do I determine what makes a certain building physically accessible? And I tell them, well, it's very simple. You put yourself in a wheelchair and go around till you can't go anymore. That means that spot is not accessible. It is very simple. There's no genius at work. Universal design is like the doors on Von's Market Ralph's, everything, it opens without our thinking about it. The last thing I read to you, the person who wrote that, this is in Access by Design, the book, and that's Itzak Perlman, in case any of you realize that genius. He would like to go where everybody else can go, and all of us should have access at the front entrance of Griffith Observatory. We are currently hoping to get a design from somebody in San Diego, since nobody in this area seems to be willing to even look at an alternative design. We really can't leave--
Ms. Doherty, can I ask you to conclude, please?
Thank you very much.
All right. Our final speaker is Ronald Antwain.
Yeah, that's pronounced Antwain. My name is Ronald Antwain, A-N-T-W-I-N-E, and this is my first time here. And I'm coming in behalf of the residents of our community that forgotten a little parcel of land called Watts. And what we're trying to find out, if Union Pacific has sold its property because some developers are showing up in our neighborhood, taking care of this property, mowing the grass and everything, and they keep telling us that they want to put a 40-unit apartment complex less than 100 feet from my front door. And so, on behalf of the residents, I'm here today to try to find out what's happening or see if we can get somebody. January 29, I attended a town hall meeting, and I read a letter to our councilwoman, Janice Han, to be read into the minutes, and I asked for a timely response. And in that, we asked for some clear-cut information, as well as an environmental impact study if any development was going to be done in our community. Since then, I've made several phone calls, I've even used the email, and I did a follow-up letter April 10, and I have yet to get any kind of response. I received a phone call from Elise Swanson, from councilwoman Janice Han's office, verbally telling me that this deal for this apartment complex hadn't gone through. But yet and still, May 4, I walk outside my door, and there's the people from the proposed development company out there tilling the land and everything, lying to the residents in our community, saying that they were city workers, they didn't have on city uniforms, they didn't have city vehicles. And we are here today, I'm here representing our community to try to get some clear-cut information, as well as request an environmental impact study like they do in other neighborhoods. I know Watts may not mean that much to some people, but Watts is what we have, and I believe that we have the same rights that any other neighborhood has. And what I would also like to do is, if I could leave a copy of this for whoever, however y'all disperse it--
We'll have Sergeant take that. And I believe that Ms. Han is there to suggest someone from your staff can help.
What I'm saying is, we've been trying to get some information from our councilwoman since January 29. That's why I'm here today.
All right. She is able to have a staff member meet with you and share information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment period, so we will close the public hearing and proceed with the items that were called special. Next item, Madam President, is item number 17, and that was called special by councilmember Labange. Mr. Labange, item 17.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that Margie Reese and her very special guest join in the center table, if they would, please, right now. Joining our General Manager, Cultural Affairs, to talk about Music L.A. is Mrs. Ginny Mancini, the beautiful wife of the late, great Henry Mancini, Dan Carlin, Executive Director of the Henry Mancini Institute, Mitch Moore, who's a great vocalist and Director of the Heart of Los Angeles, Dustin Barrera, a student, is here with us. And we're going to ask, too, that all of you, Margie, if you open up and give us a little quick presentation. Members, if you tune into this presentation, if I can use a music term, you'll find it will be in great harmony with what we all want to achieve.
So, where is everybody?
Right here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you a follow-up of a presentation that we presented to the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee. The Cultural Affairs Department has been working for the past two years to put together a program that will serve as an umbrella music instruction program for the children in our city. We have surveyed parents. We've asked about parents' interest in their children being involved in music education. We have done surveys in both English and Spanish. We've also surveyed all of the music education organizations in the city. And so, rather than duplicate the efforts of our cultural organizations, we're beginning to put together a roster of organizations that will support music education and in a program that we're now calling Music L.A. We'll launch this program July 11 at 17 different sites, so that we have a site to test in each of our council districts.
Hold on, Ms. Reese. Sergeant, I think there's a little too much noise from the rear of the chambers. If we could not draw from anyone in a green outfit, but, because I want everybody here, because this is so important, if we could there. And it's not from our officers, from the great Department of Transportation, but I think it's from behind there a little. Ms. Reese, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
If we could not draw from anyone in a green outfit. But, because I want everybody here because this is so important, if we could there. And it's not from our officers from the great Department of Transportation, but I think it's from behind there a little. Ms. Reese, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. We have worked with the Department of Recreation and Parks. We've worked with the Commission on Children, Youth, and Families. And we're also happy to report our partnership with my colleague in CDD, Cliff Graves, who is here with us this morning, to identify positions for these young people who are interested in music and have achieved some music accomplishment in their short careers that will serve as mentors and coaches for some of the children in these sites this summer. So I will yield the floor now. Mr. Labange, I have presented a package of information for you. We certainly are happy to visit with any of the council offices and your staffs for more specific information, but this summer program is our pilot and in the fall, it is our intention to cover the city as broadly as we can with Music LA.
Members, this has been distributed to you this morning and I hope you all look at it. It's really a great menu, if I could. Cliff, if you want to state a few about what CDD is doing and then I'd like to ask Ms. Mancini to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and good morning. We're very pleased to be a partner with the Department of Cultural Affairs in this really exciting program. As you know, CDD administers the Summer Youth Employment Program. And what we have agreed to do is to make 35 slots available for this program and also to be of some assistance in supporting the program directors. It's a good example, I think, of one program helping another and we're very pleased to be a part of the process.
Thank you. Ms. Mancini?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I am voicing a plea for Music LA for next year. Just to give you a little background, I was born at 107th and Vermont when there was only downtown and City Hall was the tallest building ever. But, and I carry 10 pennies with me always because I'm a child of the Depression, but I had riches in this town that students don't have now. I had a school system that provided me with a world of wonderful opportunities in school and I took advantage of them and it led me on a wonderful, exciting path in life. And I know that LA became a great city when the opening, with the opening of the Walt Disney Concert Hall. Now LA has a face on it and that is the face of music, the only international language. So I am pleading with you to fund Music LA for next year because our children need it and our city needs it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mancini. Dan Carlin, would you like to make some remarks, please, as the head of the institute?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Labange. And Madam President Protam and council members, we are all honored to address you this morning. I address you wearing three hats, actually. One is I am Chairman of the Recording Academy. That's the Grammy organization. And then I'm also the Executive Director of the Henry Mancini Institute, whose mission it is year-round to provide music education, opportunities for study and performance to members of the city and audiences alike. And also, I wear the hat of a grateful former student of the public school system in Los Angeles where I had the great opportunity to study music. This past weekend, over 200 fellow students and I celebrated the 80th birthday of our high school music teacher, Mr. Galliardi, who people came from across the country to celebrate and to thank and acknowledge the contribution made by a great teacher to our childhood and the opportunities for us to enter music. This program is unprecedented, not only in the city, but throughout the country. You have the opportunity here to take advantage of the work of the Cultural Affairs Department, Recreation and Parks, and the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families, along with volunteer organizations from around the city to go to existing locations, that is neighborhood art centers and schools, to present these programs in areas where students and children do not have this opportunity throughout the year. This may be the only opportunity you can provide these children to enter the exciting world of music. And you may find that you light a great spark for one of these students and we call upon you, please, to take advantage of this opportunity and to provide us the opportunity to serve you and the children of the city. Thank you very much.
And also, Dan Rosino, is it? John, excuse me, John, from California State University, Northridge, a teacher, a professor, one who shows the way. Please, remarks.
Thank you. My name is John Rosino. I'm Associate Professor of Music at California State University, Northridge. I'm also the Music Director of the Cal State Northridge Youth Orchestra. This is a program that encompasses teaching and having students participate in ensembles. Over 200 students participate each year. Music LA will allow us to have a summer camp or workshop for two weeks that will allow students not currently participating and students currently participating in our program to take part in musical activities throughout the summer. San Fernando Valley has a number of camp opportunities in other areas, including other aspects of the fine arts and sports, but there are no serious summer music workshops that allow students to participate in music appreciation classes, music theory classes, and performing ensembles. This will be a great opportunity for students who are not currently in our group especially to participate at close to no cost and get instruction by a number of faculty at Cal State, Northridge, as well as other professional musicians throughout the Los Angeles area. We look forward to the opportunity of partnership with the Arts Commission in providing this opportunity. I believe it will be a great experience for the students that are involved and will allow them to possibly participate in our organization throughout the coming year and continuing to keep them involved in music.
John, thank you very much and thank Cal State, Northridge for all their commitment to this there. And we hope you have great success also in your cultural center, which I know many of us support that you're trying to build. Dan, you didn't mention what high school this is, that you go to?
Reseda High School.
Reseda High School in the Valley.
Yes, sir.
And Gina?
Bret Hart Junior. Bret Hart Junior High.
All right, good, all the way.
And by the way, I, my husband was honored last year with a commemorative U.S. postage stamp, which I happen to be wearing, and I have one for each of you because I want to make a statement for music education.
Well, this is so important. Margie, I thank you. I think this is what we want, members. We want our Cultural Affairs Department to give us a menu, albeit just 15 spots in this great big city of ours, but you've done it. You've created a program which is going to be very successful. And members, the other day, I was on Hollywood Boulevard extending greetings from Mr. Garcetti and myself, as Jim Ladd, who is a great radio disc rocker, he got an award, and two of the, two of the four, three remaining doors were there. And both of them went to Los Angeles schools. You know, members and I, and I forgive me for not remembering their names, but this great band that still has that great song, Light My Fire, that everybody still plays and plays, but it came out of a school. It came out of a university high school, plus with a guy from Florida named Jim Morrison. But all of that is a music mix and this will happen here as we see. But I'm going to close my remarks, Madam President, and I want to thank you and ask the Dan Barrera here, our great student, to just go back there and, Young G, if you set the microphone for him, just play a little out and just give us 30 seconds of Music LA, just a taste of what we're going to have. Mitch Moore, you're going to line it up for us?
I just wanted to say, my name is Mitchell Moore and I'm the Executive Director of Heart of Los Angeles Youth, and we are one of the service providers for Music LA and I'm here to add my voice of support to Cultural Affairs in this initiative. And just ask Dustin Barrera, who lives at Catalina and 8th Street, has come to Heart of Los Angeles Youth since he was a fifth grader, councilman, and he can say it best how much music education and the opportunity to have music in his life as a young child means, and he'll blow it out for us.
All right, Dan.
Yeah, hi, my name's Dustin Barrera and it's a pleasure to be here in front of you. First off, I just want to say how music is a really important part of my life. That's the way I express myself. And programs like Ola and like the Community Affairs, they help a lot for inner cities kids who can't afford music lessons and parents who can't afford music lessons. These programs help, you know, kids, you know. And kids like me, my parents found out about Ola music program by a friend because we had a friend who went there like years ago. And they found out and I mean, they were happy because first off, Ola was really close to my house and second, lessons were free. So, you know, it's really cool how programs like this help everyone in the community, you know, and it doesn't matter who. And I think music is really important for every single person, every single kid. And yeah, and now I was just wondering if I have 30 seconds, if I can play something for you guys?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, all right, cool. The song is Take Five.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Laban, for that presentation and to Mr. Barrera for that demonstration. Item 17 is now before us. Let me ask the clerk to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. We will send it forthwith to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Labange, and to our guests. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, number 18, was called special for Councilmembers Zine.
Mr. Zine, item 18.
Thank you. I'd like to do 18 and 19 together, if I could.
18 and 19 will hear together.
They are connected. And what I'd like to do on 18 and 19, if we could, return that to the Budget Finance Committee. And we have a motion going forward. We're talking about $223,231.92. Instead of having this funds go to the general fund, we're looking at putting it in our Public Safety Trust. They were trying to bolster the resources of the Los Angeles Police Department and that matter is currently going through the process. So if we can return this to Budget Finance at this particular time, the state law says that after three years, the city holds the money and it's not claimed, then it would go to the general fund. What we're trying to do is see if we can make a provision that those dollars that have remained unclaimed, in this particular case, over $223,000, would go to that Public Safety Trust Fund that we've established. And if it goes back to Budget Finance, it could be decided, debated there and then we could move forward with it because we know what happens when it goes to the general fund versus a specific fund for public safety. That's my request on 18 and 19.
Mr. Parks?
We can take it back. I think the issue gets somewhat resolved today during budget hearings because this may be part of the reserve fund of trying to boost it up and so we just need to figure out if that money's already been spoken for.
Counted for.
You can find that out in Budget Finance and-
Right. So let's send this back to Budget and Finance as requested with the additional motion and request, have Budget and Finance look at it whether today or in the next subsequent meeting and bring a report back.
Thank you, both on 18 and 19. Thank you.
Is there any objection to that? If not, that will be the reorder on 18 and 19. Next item?
Item number 21 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item 21.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I just want to bring attention to what I think is really a historic lease agreement between the Port of Los Angeles and the new owners of what was previously called the Marina Hotel in San Pedro. We only have two hotels in San Pedro and as you know, we are doing major redevelopment plans in San Pedro. We're doing a million-dollar waterfront promenade that will bring more tourists into the San Pedro area. We're doing a huge revitalization of our downtown. And these owners of, the proposed owners of this new hotel are going to invest over $6 million in the Marina Hotel. It has been a hotel that has really been on the decline. The rooms are, certainly haven't been updated in a long time and we think this is, this is a really important investment into San Pedro. This is also historic for another reason. This is the first time that we have a signed memorandum of understanding between the labor community and the hotel owners. It's what's called a labor peace agreement. And as you know, in the City Council, we recently have adopted the idea of putting in place an ordinance that on all public property owned by the city of Los Angeles, that we will have labor peace agreements. What this says basically is that if the city stands to gain or lose by revenue generated, for instance, in a hotel, then we want to make sure that there are no labor disputes which would result in a work stoppage, a strike, or a lockout so that the revenue would continue and benefit the city's coffers. This is the same thing on proprietary departments who are not covered by our labor peace agreement. So this is historic. We have a signed agreement that there will be labor peace at this Marina Hotel. We're hoping that it will become a flagship DoubleTree Hotel. And what it says is because the Port of Los Angeles stands to have revenue that's either a plus or a minus, depending on whether or not people are staying at the hotel and as we know, if there's a labor dispute, if there's a lockout or a strike, it really, bottom line hurts revenue at these hotels. So it's not a part of the lease agreement, but I wanted to stand here today as part of the record of the City Council to acknowledge that we do have a signed memorandum of understanding that will create labor peace, the first time this ever happened on public property in the city of Los Angeles. This is historic. This was a side agreement. It was negotiated between H-E-R-E, Unite, and between the new owners of this hotel. I think that's worth standing up and bragging about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. There's no one else who wishes to speak, so this matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That matter is approved.
11 ayes.
All right, that is approved. We will also send that forthwith to get that contract signed. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number 41 was called special. Inasmuch as there are two reports on the file and a motion is required.
I believe the Budget and Finance report incorporates the other two, so let's vote on the Budget and Finance report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. I think I did already, but they were fine with that. Item 42, oh, the next item.
Item 42 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item 42. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, in CD 13, we've been addressing an ongoing problem throughout the city and throughout this country of tagging and vandalism of certain forms of graffiti which bring down the community and which results in so many volunteers and council offices and city workers and time and money being used to make sure that we re-beautify our streets and our buildings from the vandalism of graffiti. We looked at a program up in San Jose which drove down graffiti by 96% in a five-year period and modeled Untag, a groundbreaking program in CD 13 called Uniting Neighborhoods to Abolish Graffiti, which we launched with Chief Bratton last year and which relies on a core through the network of many block captains who take just a single block and adopt that block and make sure that graffiti gets called in immediately, taken down, and that we also deal with some other parts of the program from vining to adopting hotspots, the use of cameras in certain places where there's been vandalism time and time again. And it's been able already to drive down graffiti by about 30% in our district. Today, we'll take a vote on affirming, and I'd like to move the Arts Parks Report, which just adds one thing on vining, to the Public Works Report. What Public Works and Arts Parks and the Public Works Board has approved of taking this program citywide. And I really encourage you and feel free to contact my staff, any members of other staffs, on what we've been able to do with a computerized system to be able to get on top of the graffiti and working with our purveyors. And in the budget, we'll be hopefully expanding some of the teams that serve the entire city to make sure that we can deal with the additional work to stay on top of graffiti. It's a very grassroots, neighborhood-based initiative. You can go to my website, cd13.com, and see on the Untag button what it entails, but you become a block captain, you have a real sense of stewardship in your own community. And I want to thank all the block captains that have been a part of the Untag success and encourage folks from throughout the city to join in as part of this. You get expedited painting out, you get to be a part of the solution, you get some equipment and some other things for the neighborhood, and you learn really the differences between etching on glass and sidewalk graffiti and some of the more usual paint that we see on buildings. And you can really become a part of that citywide effort now of reducing graffiti- And you can really become a part of that citywide effort now of reducing graffiti throughout Los Angeles. It is one of the most frustrating tasks as a council member to have that time and time again, and we think this program has really emerged as a great model for the entire city. And so we encourage you to become a part of that. And with today's action and your support, we will finally have this citywide. And I want to thank Operation Clean Sweep and all the folks at Public Works, the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Smith, and Chair, Mr. Laban as well, and Arts Parks for stewarding this through. And we look forward to many, many days of reducing that graffiti until we hit what San Jose was able to do after spending a week with their mayor, learning that and seeing what has been such a success. We too here in Los Angeles don't have to accept graffiti. We can eradicate it in L.A. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to applaud my colleagues on this effort. I'd like to make a friendly amendment in that we invite the MTA and other county agencies who have a budget for removing graffiti. We work with the county. They also manage parts of the river, and there's a maintenance factor there in how we paint out the graffiti as they spray up all the walls within the actual channel. Our rail lines are also another area that gets hard-hit. We have, of course, the corridors where the rail lines, like the Go Line, the Future Lines, Expo Line, they all have pathways where the old rail lines go through, the industrial sites that are now also building up as residential pockets, given our adaptive reuse. So how we eliminate that graffiti and leverage what they have to offer. And last but not least is the state. All the graffiti under our freeway onramps and offramps, all those pillars that we see get tagged up, as we drive in through our freeways, we see underneath freeways, it's especially like a canvas, and how often it gets sprayed out, again, accumulating the notion of leveraging, invite them in so that our grassroots folks, people in the community, have contacts to those agencies and those entities that also provide, sad to say, millions of dollars of graffiti removal programs. So I'd just like to offer as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Councilman Grul.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and I want to stand up to compliment Mr. Garcetti in the creation of this program and using that model to expand it citywide. And I think Mr. Reyes was also very much in tune my thinking of, which is looking at those departments that do have money and how we coordinate. One of my biggest issues with the Department of Water and Power, which does not have a dedicated source or an individual that goes out and actually removes that graffiti, and we've found on some facilities, and I can't remember if I introduced a motion or sent a letter to them a year ago, saying we want to understand how you're removing the graffiti and to expedite it, because they similarly are in charge of a number of facilities and walls that we need to make sure not, do not have graffiti. And I think the partnership that has been developed in Mr. Garcetti's program demonstrates that it's all of our problems, and it is about prevention, it's about maintenance, and about enforcement. Mr. Zine and I were up early one morning participating in that enforcement. But it's become a problem, and it is just oftentimes the beginning of someone who gets into a gang, it's a beginning of downgrading that quality of life for those neighborhoods. So we need to continue to have a light shining on this and a focus, and I think this is a great program to expand citywide. Congratulations, Mr. Garcetti.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilmember Garcetti. I read in the paper that crime in Hollywood is down. They haven't had any murders in that area since the first of the year. Obviously, things are improving and tourism's coming back, so acknowledgement to you for the fine work that you're doing in that corridor. I know Laban has a little piece of that action someplace, but it mainly falls in your territory. We have a Valley Alliance, Danny Ruiz, who serves the San Fernando Valley, and he can't keep up with it, and we do a good job with what we have as resources, anything we can do to help. I just wanted to add to the dialogue that we do have the $1,000 reward for anyone coming forward who brings that information where someone's arrested and convicted for graffiti. And knowing the Public Safety Committee, this past Monday, we had a number of items that were approved where people received a $1,000 reward. So in addition, there is that financial incentive that we offer to people who report and apprehend individuals who are causing this destruction of property, public and private. But again, congratulations. We need to keep this a clean city. And when I travel into other areas of Southern California, they don't have that visual decay. I know we're doing it better. We need to continue that effort, and this is a positive approach to help bring a solution to that so everyone can live in peace and tranquility. Again, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. The matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 44 was called special by Councilmember Grul.
Councilmember Grul.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and I'd like to invite up Jimmy Price from our Department of Transportation and many of the other members you see from DOT here today, as well as Julie Butcher, who I think is still here. Oh, she's sitting over there, just to come to the front desk. Colleagues, today, this is a report and a update on the non-felony stolen vehicle recovery pilot program. And many of you know that in our neighborhoods, we continue to have a problem of abandoned vehicles, many of which are stolen vehicles. We have been trying to figure out a way to put more police officers on the street, and we believe that with the success of this program, that more stolen cars are off the streets and more police officers are in our neighborhoods. In just four months, 945 stolen vehicles in our pilot program were towed by the Department of Transportation versus our Los Angeles Police Department. That means that those officers that were spending an hour or two hours minimally towing those vehicles are now patrolling our streets instead of taking those vehicles. So that's 945 times that a police officer responded to a more violent crime instead of towing a car. And I think what we proved here is that the way, if we rethink the way we do our business, the city does business, it actually works. And so we're proposing in this next year's budget, looking at a citywide program that we can utilize for this stolen vehicle recovery program. We believe that recovering stolen vehicles removes blight from our neighborhoods, prevents crime, and I think also most importantly is improving the quality of life of those neighborhoods. And I wanted to have the Department of Transportation here today, as well as representatives from the SEIU, who were the idea makers for this. We just took that idea and ran with it. We worked very closely with the Los Angeles Police Department. I know initially, they were a little concerned about how this was going to work, and now they're the first to stand up and say, let's expand the citywide. It is really relieving our officers. And so I wanted to be able to say thank you to all of the DOT representatives that are here today who have made this program successful, and ask Jimmy and maybe one or two of his other officers to have a brief comment. Please.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Grul. The stolen recovery program has truly proven to be a successful program. In fact, it has exceeded our expectations. As of yesterday, we had recovered over 1,181 stolen vehicles from the city streets, approximately 605 from the South Bureau, and another 585 or so from the Valley Bureau. And today, I have some of the key partners in this partnership, and I'd like to introduce them. To the far left, I have Captain Elmo Walker, the commanding officer of our Southern Office, and seated next to me, I have the General Manager of SEIU, Local 347, Julie Butcher. And to the right of me, I have Captain Susan Hicks, formerly the Captain of the Valley Office, and now in charge of the city's crossing guard program. And seated next to her is Captain Christine Mata, the current Captain of the Valley Parking Enforcement Office. And next to her is Sergeant Gerald Anderson, the Business Rep for Local 777, who represents supervisors and superintendents. So as you can see, this wasn't the typical joint labor management effort. This combined several unions and several departments. And I'd like to commend the Los Angeles Police Department and Chief William Bratton for their cooperation and support. They have been a model partner, and without their help, this wouldn't have been the success that it is today. Julie, you have any comments?
I just think this proves that the workers of Los Angeles are here to step up and very proud of the additional services that we can provide, not only at no cost, but actually saving money, generating revenue, increasing services. This is something that the workers are extremely proud of doing, and we look forward to doing, expanding their role of traffic officers to serve the people of Los Angeles. So thank you for the recognition, but the recognition goes to the folks doing the work.
I'd like to echo Judy's compliments and comments. I feel that traffic officers are part of the city family and probably distinguish themselves as being the most committed and dedicated city employees that we have. Sergeant Anderson, on behalf of 777, would you like to comment?
I'd just like to acknowledge that partnership of 777 and 347, and look forward to working with you again on that TO-3.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Thank you very much, Councilmembers.
Thank you. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to, again, thank our DOT officers for the successful program, and we look forward to expanding it citywide. It was piloted in both the San Fernando Valley and South Bureau, and are looking forward to taking some of the lessons learned during the pilot program to expand it citywide.
Mr. Zine.
Yeah, Chief Price, before you escape with your captains, if you'd just come back to the table.
How about the workers?
Well, the workers, they're already escaping. They're trying to get back on the road. You can stand up. You can stand up. We talk about dedication to public service. We talk about people who are very committed people of Los Angeles. On your left arm, you have hash marks.
Yes, sir.
And I see a lot of hash marks there.
Yes.
I see like 5, 10, like 30? 30 years of service?
32 years, sir.
32 years. Captain?
34.
34?
34.
34?
20.
20. And we have like 100 years right in front of us. Talk about dedication to public service and public safety. And all the other ones with those hash marks, we respect that because of your years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles. I know it's not easy out there when you're doing the enforcement. I know it's not easy with all the issues that come forward, but we appreciate it, and those hash marks clearly show, as you get those, one every five years, the dedication that you've given to the people of Los Angeles. I just want to stand up and congratulate all of you for the dedication and the hard work you do every single day. Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski.
President, I too just want, not only to commend this program, but just yesterday in Public Safety Committee, because of the success of this program, we are now looking to see whether or not we can add for the traffic officers even more capability, and that is, they are now working with LAPD to see if, given the scanners that they are using on license plates, whether or not they could find something necessarily involved in more than just a stolen vehicle, perhaps a vehicle which's number might have been used in a crime, perhaps a vehicle where the license number or license plate might have indicated an Amber Alert vehicle. So there's issues there at a higher level, a higher threshold relative to the commission of a crime, but there has been such strong support, such strong satisfaction in how well this program has gone forward, that we are looking now to begin the meet and confer and the MOU discussion memorandum of agreement between LAPD and DOT so that we can accelerate this program. And every time we talk about fighting crime, hiring more officers, we always use the word efficiency. And the more efficient we can make our other partners in the city, our other employees in the city to work in partnership, I think we're going to reap the better and better and higher benefits. So again, I think the best indication of a program working well is a program that we said has worked well, so now let's expand it, let's add more to it, because it is and has been a great, great idea that we can only make better. So I too congratulate the department and our city employees for getting this work done, and we're going to give you more. Thank you.
Mr. Laban.
I just wanted to stand to congratulate him. And Chief Price, the other day, all the traffic lights were out at Rowan and Hyperion, and before I could call from the local school where my children are 10, there was an officer in the intersection directing traffic to make the intersection safe. I just want to salute LA DOT, the traffic officers for making LA move safely and efficiently. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, item 44. Close the roll, please, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 47, called special for card from the public.
And I believe it's Mr. John Walsh on item 47.
This concerning the Community Redevelopment Agency, you're a candy store. I hope everyone knows that the Community Redevelopment Agency lost $2 billion over the next 30 years in a court decision about two weeks ago. Now, you pro-CRA people are trying to make the public think that $2 billion is going to go into rich developers' pockets or rich Republicans. In fact, that $2 billion of property money goes back to the City of Los Angeles for police. It goes to the county, and the county was the one that sued the city, incidentally. So the five supervisors beat you, 15 to 5. They were outnumbered 3 to 1. The CRA, and if anyone is interested in the CRA, Redevelopment, The Unknown Government, A Report to the People of California, and you can get a copy of this at www.redevelopment.com. Redevelopment.com. This is an exposé of the CRA racket. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for item 47. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 59, called special for card from the public.
Mr. Walsh, welcome back.
You may be seeing a lot of me right before the election here. And remember, I'm a substitute teacher, so this cost me $180 to speak in front of you. And you know what? It's worth the $180 in lost revenue. When it comes to security, I think we ought to point out that the security in this building is out of control. Now, the police do a good job, but in this building, not only do you go through a metal detector, but you must show ID. Let's look at other buildings, the supervisors' building, the county building. No ID, no metal detector to get in. MTA building, no ID, no metal detector to get in. Of LAUSD, no ID, no metal detector to get in. The courts, the Superior Courts, metal detector, but no ID. Now, when I go to jury duty, they don't ask me for proof of my citizenship, they don't ask me for ID, they don't ask me anything. They just send a letter, and if I don't go, I can be arrested, and if I yawn in front of the judge, I can be put in jail. Down here, you can't get in. In fact, we fought you, and now we have what's known as the Brown Act privilege. If I invoke the Brown Act privilege, a person can come on here without an ID to come to this meeting. I like to finish by saying it is also racist, because I know dozens of people who are undocumented workers who live in my neighborhood and work and pay taxes. When I ask them to come down here, they say, we can't come to City Hall because we don't have ID. Now, if somebody goes and buys false ID at MacArthur Park, you'll put him in jail. This is the only city in the United States where the people who live here, and I am more politically correct than you, and I speak for every undocumented worker, when I say that you have put barbed wire around this building, and that is racist. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment to item 59. Members of the council wishing to speak on item 59? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Excuse me, that was item 47. Next item, please.
Item number 64, called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han? Item 64.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I, Mr. President, I'm sorry. I actually just wanted to bring this to our attention. I'm asking you to support this reward motion for $50,000 to encourage anyone in the public who might have information about the shooting death of Mr. James Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins was one of those who was shot to death on the Harbor Freeway on April 13th. He and a friend were traveling from Wilmington, where they had just gone to Pick Your Part, an automotive facility in Wilmington, where many people go to find parts for cars, and he and his friend were on their way to a Bible study when he was shot and killed by a passing vehicle. He was traveling in a white Pontiac Grand Prix. So far, the police have no information, no leads on who might have been the shooter of that. Hard to believe-- Hard to believe that since March, we have had 16 shootings on the freeways in and around Southern California. I just thought this was an opportunity. A lot of people watch our council meetings. It's amazing how many people watch Channel 35. Somebody out there might be paying attention to this, and if you support this motion, we will have $50,000 to provide to someone who might come forward with information that would lead to the arrest and the conviction of this shooter who has taken Mr. Wiggins' life. I hope you'll support me in this.
Other members of the council wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 68, call special four card from the public.
Item 68 now before us. Mr. Walsh.
This is my final appearance of the day. There was a story in The Times. I've lived in Hollywood for, since '76, almost 30 years. The crime is at a very low ebb, and of course, the police have enormous, deserve enormous credit for it, and so does Mr. Garcetti. He's not here, he's running around someplace, of course, not listening, but he has done a good job. But the, what this article didn't point out is, it's the community groups that I belong to and all of us in the community that deserve some of the credit. But what I'm worried about in Hollywood, and as I said, I've been here since '76, I have never seen the homeless problem this bad. And I'm not talking about 15 or 16-year-old runaways. The Independent did a very good story, Tony Castro's newspaper. We have children, two and three years old, families living on the street on Hollywood Boulevard in front of the Free Clinic with barbecues, infants on Hollywood Boulevard. This is, we have the conditions on Hollywood Boulevard of Calcutta. Where are all our groups? Where are all the poverty pimps? All the people who make a living? I have never seen children on the, I have never seen strollers, I have never seen during the summer, people being rained on and huddling. It's worse than Mexico City. It's worse than El Salvador, what's going on on Hollywood Boulevard. And nobody gives a damn, because the LA Times hasn't done the story, and you are totally reactive out there. And I invite Garcetti or anybody to come out on a weeknight, and I will point out at least 20 children with their parents under 10 years old, living on the streets of Hollywood Boulevard. It is shameful.
Ms. Perry.
Also known as Mr. Garcetti, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, I was over on this side. Thank you for those comments, and I agree with them, that we've actually tried to be proactive, and Hollywood is one of the few places, I know there's some money in the Valley now as well, for a new homeless shelter that will be opening up under the auspices of people assisting the homeless path, one of the nationally highlighted groups that's really looked at comprehensive services, not just a shelter, but also life skills and job training, and even a beauty salon to give people that dignity back. And I think you're exactly right, that as we see the progress that we, and the development that we have in Hollywood, it has to be with a conscience. And I know Mr. Labange just also had a meeting with folks from the Hollywood Interface Sponsoring Committee, and our commitment to continuing to bring homeless services to get those folks off the streets and into better lives is something that we hold very near and very dear, and I think those actions have been showing that for four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 74, call special four card from the public.
Council calls forward Ted Newbauer.
Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I am PSC Ted Newbauer. I'm a Vietnam veteran and associated with the Veterans Center for Law and Justice. We have just had the 60th anniversary of the end of World War II. So on behalf of all veterans, the Bataan survivors of the Bataan Death March, as well as the people returning from Iraq who find their jobs gone, I'm asking you not to make item 74 just an empty gesture. I'm asking for you to give it, give it some meaning. Talk about homelessness, Mr. Walsh. You're right, we have veterans, indigent veterans, sleeping in cardboard boxes here in Los Angeles. I'm asking that low-income and indigent veterans be given special needs status. As part of this resolution, I'm also asking that in the future, low-income housing sponsored by Los Angeles have its opportunities published in veterans' publications, veterans' magazines. I just had an experience doing an investigation with the Views on Sunset project, the management company, Levine Management, expressed the opinion to me last week that they are not obligated to prove to the community that the process of filling this housing is fair. So please, give it some meaning, okay? Not just an empty gesture. Special needs and published in veterans' publications for public housing that's available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item 74. Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I brought this forward. May is Veterans Appreciation Month, and we do appreciate what our veterans do for us. And I also want to comment on the USO, the Bob Hope USO Center, they're going to have a Radiothon that's going to begin this Friday at 6:00 a.m., and it's going to go for 36 hours on KNX Radio 1070 and K-Earth 101, 36-hour Radiothon to help the USO, which helps our veterans. And if I can get the camera to shine in on what I'm holding, this is something that the Los Angeles Police Department's been distributing, LAPD with the blinking light, "Support our troops." If we can get a close-up on that. We want to keep our veterans in our thoughts, our prayers, also their families, and we would request that, this is not a political matter, this is a matter that is concerned for those who have fought to preserve our liberties and freedoms, our brave and courageous military veterans. Thank you.
Other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused May 17th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Zine is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused personal business on May 18th and 24th, and city business May 20th to leave at 11:30. Those meet council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Grue requests to be excused May 11th to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Grue is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused May 11th to leave at 11:45. A motion is required on that one. And also on Wednesday, May 18th, that meets council policy. Those are for city business.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Ledlow requests to be excused from today's meeting and tomorrow's meeting for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Labange moves, and excuse is granted.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, May 18th to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Cardenas is excused.
And also, Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Tuesday, May 17th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Thank you very much, colleagues. To the end of our agenda, do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Ms. Labange.
Yesterday, Mr. Garcetti and I represented all of you quite well in Mr. Garcetti's district for the birthday for Johnny Grant, the honorary mayor of Hollywood. And he was a great celebration at the Hollywood History Museum on Highland Avenue, and Mr. Garcetti made beautiful remarks, as always, and Johnny Grant, who's a great lover of Los Angeles and a special great lover of Hollywood, was greatly honored. But there's a great exhibit on Johnny Grant at the Hollywood Museum, Hollywood History Museum, right on Highland Avenue, just south of Hollywood Boulevard. Happy birthday, Johnny Grant, the great Johnny Grant, the greatest honorary mayor in the history of honorary mayors. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Johnny. Other announcements, colleagues? If there are no announcements, then just prior to, Mr. Garcetti, did you have an announcement? Then prior to calling for adjournment tributes, I know there's a lot of people, both in City Hall and throughout the city, wondering about the services that have been scheduled for Miguel Contreras, who passed just this last Friday. They've been published in the newspapers, but for purposes of announcement, the viewing and rosary will be tomorrow, May 11th, viewing from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at St. Vincent Church at 621 West Adams Boulevard, and the rosary is from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. There will be a funeral, mass, and reception Thursday, May 12th, the mass at 2:00 p.m., and the reception beginning at 4:00 p.m. at the Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels. We expect a lot of people to want to participate in those. If there's no further announcements, would you all please rise for adjournment motions? Colleagues, if you'll allow me to begin, I just renounced the service schedule for Miguel Contreras, as that we all, all members adjourn in memory of Miguel, and feel comfortable just calling him Miguel, because that's how we all knew him. He had a tremendous relationship with each and every one of us, and a number of political, civic, community, and business leaders throughout the region, throughout the state, and really throughout the country. And I think most of us will want to say a few words here today. I first met Miguel more than 10 years ago, in his first day at the County Federation of Labor, when he was then just the political director, and I was an intern over at the County Federation of Labor. He really clarified to me what the role of organized labor meant in our society. I grew up in a labor household, as you all know. My father's a cook and is a member of HERE Local 11, now Unite HERE, and everything from a decent wage to medical benefits, that organized labor is about, and that's what Miguel really championed and then some. He knew that the future clout of organized labor, the way to best defend and advance the interest of working men and women was not just organizing the workplace, but to organize in the political arena. And he did so, and he did so tremendously. A lot of local, state, and congressional officials serving in office owe a large part of their election to the efforts of organized labor, and really the work that he did in recent years to build a coalition ethnically, geographically, economically, to support the causes of working men and women is tremendous and shows the way for coalition building throughout Los Angeles well into the future. He's survived, as you know, by his wife, Marilena Durazo, his sons, Michael and Mario, and many friends who have worked with him and have been touched by him over the years, as that we adjourn in his memory. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for informing Los Angeles about where the memorial services will be for Miguel. I first met Miguel Contreras on the very first political campaign I ever worked on in 1994 with Kathleen Brown. And the first day I met him, he made such an incredible impression, just because he was, he was both so skilled at what he did, but also such a person who loved life itself and was always there to rib you, to joke with you, and didn't have a lot of respect for you unless you could give back what he gave you. And he was somebody who understood what power was about. I think a lot of people, before his death, used to talk about him, that he loved the deal. And he certainly did, but he loved the deal because he understood that it wasn't just a transaction, that it was about relationships. And in a city where oftentimes people forget about relationships, which underpin and underlie all of human activity, he would bring people together because he knew it was only through relationships that progress was made. It was only through bringing people together and telling them, "Come on, guys, we've got to solve this problem," or "We've got to find a resolution," that that's how a city moves forward. He was the voice of so many people in this city that never have a voice at the table, and we took that for granted. We take for granted, because of how strong he was and how powerful he was, that that voice will always be there, and yet, all of a sudden, that voice is not. I sat with Miguel just a couple days before, one-on-one in his office, a couple days before he was taken from us, and it was the same Miguel, laughing and insightful and most incredible wit and intelligence, and somebody who believed in what he believed in, and believed that through and through, and understood that in order for us to have justice in this city, that everybody had to have a voice, not just Miguel Contreras. Thank you for your friendship, Miguel, and for Marilena, and for Michael and Mario. You are a part of our family long before this happened, and will continue to be. But the last thing that, I was asked this weekend, well, can anybody fill his shoes? And I think the greatest tribute to Miguel is that there are so many people who are able to fill his shoes, because he believed in cultivating leadership more than anybody I've ever met in my entire life. And he is somebody who has so many lieutenants and soldiers that he's put in place in that model, that he was taught by his own mentor, Cesar Chavez, that we will be sure that that memory is a living memory, and every single action that we take as we remember him today, stunned by what's happened, will be one in his memory as well. Rest in peace, Miguel.
Ms. Grue.
Thank you. I keep wanting to see him sit there. You know, on Friday night, when I got the call, as we all did, about his passing, it still seemed quite a shock, and all weekend, that was everywhere you went. Did you hear? Can you believe how shocked? But Miguel, whether he was, sometimes he'd be in the front seat, but more than not, he'd be in the back of the pews in this council chambers, here to talk to people about a cause that was important to him to fight, I think as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, for those who did not have a voice. I remember his laugh, you know? He had a hearty laugh that, particularly when you were talking about some politics or gossip, he also was one of those that loved the gossip, and to talk about what was happening in City Hall or outside City Hall. My fondest memories were, as yours, Eric, which was sitting down and just talking to him and learning from him. And I met him when I worked for Mayor Bradley, and met him even more, started talking to him when he became the political director, but also when James Wood passed away, and who was going to be the next leader. And Miguel stepped up to the plate and really became a beacon for so many individuals and families in this city. And he became respected, not only by the union leadership, but I think by the business community in Los Angeles. They knew he was going to be a fighter, they knew that he was going to stand up and say, "We're going to fight for the workers," and make sure that they had health care and they had a living wage. I also remember him as a great father. When I was at DreamWorks, he'd come on Saturday mornings, we often would have some special screenings, and he brought his son. And they sat there and enjoyed that Saturday morning. And so, for me, he will be a friend that is lost, someone who inspired all of us. And so, just want to send my best to his wife, Marilena, and the rest of the family, and to all of us nationally that are mourning his death, but know that his fight will still be within all of us, and that he will be greatly missed.
Ms. Hahn.
I agree with my colleague Wendy that the call was just so shocking, and the number of people who had just been in his office, or just had talked to him on the phone, or just had seen him somewhere, was a real testament to his accessibility to all of Los Angeles, all Angelinos. He was certainly a great, powerful leader of LA County Federation of Labor, but he was also such a humble, honest, just down-to-earth human being. And Miguel never waited for you to call him. I think of the times that Miguel called me, in fact, just recently had called me to say, "You know, after the election's over, May 17th, I just want to sit down with you and have a cup of coffee and talk about some things." He was the one that called you. Many times, you think of someone in his position that would sort of hold court and expect everyone to come and, you know, try to get an audience with him, and it was not that way with Miguel. He really wanted to talk to you, he really wanted to make the effort, whether it was a public event or a city council meeting, he wanted to talk to you. And I will always be grateful to Miguel for really, again, teaching me, mentoring me. We did not always agree on things, we sparred a lot on issues, but we We did not always agree on things, we sparred a lot on issues, but we always remained friends, and we always had a common respect. I really got very close to him during the 2002 contract dispute at the ports. And when our dock workers were locked out, Miguel and I became very close in terms of our strategy, in terms of the way, on a moment's notice, we would hold a rally or a press conference, either at his office or down at the port. And it was a great sense of solidarity that I experienced in the plight of the dock workers. I also think one of Miguel's greatest qualities was never forgetting his childhood in Dinuba. To listen to him talk about, just as a small kid, passing out those leaflets, attending rallies, he was really inspired quite young to understand the plight of the farmworkers and of all working men and women. And it was really great inspiration to hear him talk about his days in Dinuba. We will miss Miguel greatly. We appreciate Maria Elena always having shared him with the rest of us. I know that was a great sacrifice that she made on a regular basis.
Mr. Labange.
No, I just follow my colleagues, and when you look at our city and you look at people who have impact, when they write about Los Angeles 100 years ago, 100 years ago, they talk about individuals who made impacts. When they write about Los Angeles 100 years from now, they'll talk about what Miguel Contreras did, and the transformation of County Fed, and the workers, and the people who are in this city, and their need to be represented and represented well. He worked real hard. And I think, Wendy, what you said best was how he laughed. And I know that's a beautiful character of one. And Janice, what you also said too, about his childhood, as I read in his stories in the newspaper accounts, to remember where you're from, to be inspired from where you're from, and then to have an opportunity to change others, to make it better for others, because of where you're from, and the family you're from, and the people you're around, is a great testament to an individual. So he will be sorely missed, and my thoughts are with his family and all those associated with him. And I know our own colleague, Bart Loglow, I think had three conversations that morning, you were meeting with him the night before, and all of the interplay that one has, and every day is precious for each of us here, whatever role we have. And God bless his memory, and such tragic that he's taken at such a young age.
Ms. Sikowski.
I share some of the thoughts, particularly getting the call on Friday night. Very often, you hear about the death of someone, and there's shock sometimes, there's sadness. Hearing about the death of Miguel, it literally took my breath away. It was, and I think partly because of what we're hearing today, he seemed so much larger than life. I mean, he was a humble man, he was a man who did his work, was always there with the hand and the smile. But he seemed, in terms of what he had created, so much larger than life, and so indestructible. So that's why I think it was as shocking as it was. Obviously, there's incredible stories and memories. A couple that really impressed me are, not only did he work within County Fed and the unions as he knew them, but he reached out to those areas and those entities of people who might not have been unionized. And that he is the one who helped create and cause Madeline Janice Sapericio to come here to represent and create something called LANE, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, to say that there are workers yet who are working but aren't being recognized. There are workers who aren't yet able to access the benefits that the labor organizations have benefited, and that he said, "Let's reach out and create that entity." And then to see in that entity, recently with the LAX plan, to be behind the effort to create a $500 million community benefit program, to say there are people who are affected, and those are the people, "We're going to do something that's great for the city, we're going to do something to move the region forward, but we have to also do something for the people who are going to be affected." And time and again, as we saw this chamber filled with workers and laborers who were here to support a project, Miguel, as you write, wasn't necessarily standing in front of them, he would stand behind them, because they themselves were the potency and the force. But even with that, he didn't just say, "These are my workers, these are the people I'm working with." He reached across to the business community, and had forged recently a relationship, an alliance, with the LA Chamber of Commerce and the labor group, to say, "Together, we will both benefit, together we need to benefit for the future of the city." So he just crossed every line that ever was made, imaginary or otherwise. And as I say, his loss is stunning, and I think the city will feel its effect, both personally and among ourselves and among our programs and projects for a long time to come.
Mr. Reyes.
That Thursday evening, we were celebrating Cinco de Mayo. We had mariachis, we had music, union leadership was there. And what he tied in was all of the culture elements that make up the majority of the city, under this umbrella of unions. What he saw is the future in bringing in the labor force that makes this city, this country, run. And he saw it. He was at a point where we were actually having workshops with Oaxacanos, people from Zacatecas, and looking how you look into the international structure of labor and business. That's how far he was looking. And to be able to fold in those elements that make one comfortable, especially if you're one who grew up in the culture of poverty, one who is not part of the makeup of boards at the corporate level, or even in the higher-ups of the union managers, he broke that glass ceiling. He created that link that showed the union structure. It's important to reach out to all people, even though you don't speak English, even though you don't have the same mainstream experience, much like those of us who come from the urban center. And survive through the efforts of parents who are janitors, housekeepers, caregivers, farmworkers. That's the experience he was familiar with, and that's what he brought to the board. And that's what he brought to negotiations. And that's what made this union structure so powerful. Has been well documented, one of the few union organizations that has actually been growing, as opposed to deteriorating. That was the beauty, the inside, the strength of Miguel Contreras. We're going to miss him. Had the opportunity to spend time with him in Mexico City, and it turns out that his grandparents come from the same colonia as my grandparents, Colonia Motesuma and Deefe. Odds of that happening just striking. We got to spend time together and talked about, "What's the future like? How do we mobilize people? How do we create an environment where workers can truly feel that they are part of a system that looks out not only for those who have the resources, but those who help make those resources?" That's where he was going. It weighs heavy in my heart, my son has the same classes as he does at Cathedral. And to be taken away like this, it hurts. And I just hope we can all be there for him and his family, and for the union workers who are going to miss him. And on behalf of Janet Perry, she also wants to make a statement that she will also miss him. He played a big role in trying to organize the communities she represents. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we reflect on our relationships with Miguel Contreras, I met him when I was a director with the police protectively, and saw his leadership, his passion. And anytime there was a demonstration, he'd always make sure that police officers didn't get hurt. He always made sure that it was organized in a proper fashion, that the message was sent, but there wasn't violence. When I worked on the Charter Commission, I met with Miguel on a number of occasions, and he always used to say, "Have a cup." It was always, "Have a cup." It's not, "Let's do lunch or dinner, but let's have a cup." And I remember when I recently ran for reelection, and I was going to go before the cope, I had a meeting with him prior to it at Langer's. We had a cup. And he says, "You have my personal endorsement." And I said, "Miguel, I'm a Republican, how can labor support a Republican?" He says, "You're a friend, and I support you." And then when the day for the cope came around, the time kept changing, got earlier and earlier, then I got a call. "You don't have to come down, we've endorsed you, you're okay." I went down anyway and met with Miguel to thank him, to express my appreciation for his friendship, and his leadership, and his passion. I remember during the supermarket strike, how he was there for the workers. And he was always there for the people who needed someone to help them. He'd always help those that oftentimes couldn't help themselves. I'll always remember him as a man who represented 800,000 people, as a man who was, came from humble beginnings, but made it to the top of the County Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO, and really was there to help people all the time, making their lives better. Whatever organization needed help, they could go to Miguel Contreras, and he'd be there in his organization, and the cope would always be there for them. He'll always have a place in my heart as helping me personally and professionally. And to his family, he's made a mark on Los Angeles. He's made a mark that will not be erased. He's had such impact on so many people's lives. He's brought people together, as Councilman Ms. Sikowski says, with the airport, as an airport commissioner, making that happen. And he served two roles as airport commissioner, as a commissioner on the airport, in helping establish what we need to do to Los Angeles International Airport. As he rests in peace, and we gather this week for the services, we'll continue to reflect on the impact he's had on each and every one of us, and those hundreds and thousands of people who've looked to him to help them, and he's been there. He's never turned people down. I hope his family understands the compassion, the concern that we have, the love we have for Miguel, and may he rest in peace.
Other tributes? Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Louis Neese, passed away April 20th. Louis Neese was born on October 12th, 1909, in the Chavez Ravine area of Los Angeles. In 1933, at the age of 24, Louis married his sweetheart Rose. They spent the next 70 years together until Rose's passing in 2003. In 1943, the couple bought into the successful Galco's business that was located in present day Chinatown. In 1955, due to city condemnation of the store location, Louis moved the store into Highland Park to serve the numerous Italian families located in the suburbs. This year, 2005, also marks the 50th anniversary of the store location at 5702 York Boulevard. Galco's has always been known for its deli counter, including the Blockbuster Sub Sandwich. Today's Louis's son, John, is operating the specialty store known for its 550 unique brands of soda, beer, and wine. Louis and Rose Charlie focus their efforts on their four children, eight grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Our thoughts are with them. He's survived by his four sons, Frank, John, Louis, Mike, and his brother.
Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, request re-adjourned in memory of Brad Gillum, passed away May 1st. Brad was 34 years of age, resident of Woodland Hills. He passed away unexpectedly. He was born and raised in Saint Paul, Nebraska, graduation from Hastings College in Nebraska. He then moved to Los Angeles, where he resided for the past 13 years. Vice president of Sales for Sendia Corporation, Santa Monica. Brad enjoyed playing golf, traveling with his wife and friends, and Nebraska football. He will be missed by his family and friends, and he is survived by his wife Susan, parents Dwayne and Jill, his grandfather Joe, sister Lisa, and brother-in-law Eric, three nieces and nephews. May Brad Gillum rest in peace.
Other tributes? Ms. Sikowski.
President, I would like to have the council adjourn in the memory of a city employee who died over the weekend, Susan Wagner. Susan was a human resources, excuse me, a community resources specialist for the city attorney's office and worked out of the West LA office of city attorney. She worked very, very closely with my office, but moreover, she worked incredibly closely with the community. You never saw the neighborhood prosecutor from either the West LA or the Pacific Division without Susan Wagner at her side. Susan actually had, her whole life had been given to the community. She lived in the Venice community and had worked for Councilwoman Ruth Galanter since the mid-'80s, doing constituent relations, but mostly dealing with issues like Narcotics Abatement Task Force out of the Oakwood Recreation Center, dealing with LAPD and their CPAB, and their subunit in the CPAB dealing with homelessness. She left Ruth's office in '93 because she went to work then for St. Joseph's Center, which is a nonprofit organization in Venice, which deals singularly with the homeless community. And she had worked there from '93 until '97, when again, the city attorney thought she was of such benefit that the city attorney hired her. And the work that she did for the city attorney, for the police department, for the community was just unparalleled in every part of her life. Not only was she working in all of these arenas all the time, but as a volunteer, she was the neighborhood watch block captain in her Venice and Oakwood community. She was a member of the Lincoln Boulevard Corridor Association, trying to look at how we could use planning to create more housing, but better-looking quality of projects on Lincoln Boulevard. She was a volunteer at the Pacific Community Police Station, the Community Relations Office, and back in the early '80s, she was a volunteer with Dare. So she had just made her life giving back to the community, both professionally and as a volunteer. She had not been feeling well lately, literally went last Thursday to the doctor to have a blood workup done on why she was tired and feeling a little disoriented. And the doctor said, "I have to admit you immediately, you've got a fast-growing tumor in the brain." She had surgery over the weekend, was out of surgery, but then suffered a stroke and passed away. Woman about 51 years old, I believe. She is survived by her mother Catherine, brothers Bill and Tom, sisters Janet Graff, Lynn Getzoff, and Patty Beiner. And the city family in West LA, the police communities of the Venice, Westchester, West LA communities are all just stunned by her loss as well, because her face, her help, her assistance, her work, in some of the hardest areas of working, are going to be very, very, very much missed.
I think to all members, to that great person. And also, I think we call out all members for Miguel Contreras.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.